Okay, I will call the meeting back to order to reconvene an open session. We were in closed session earlier. Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Amory Board of Education. The first item on the agenda is the introduction to new staff members.
Okay, well, we have two new staff members that are with us this evening. We have Jessica Whitkop. Jessica, if you can come over so we can see you. She is elementary school library media aide para. And we also have Sally Hanks, bus driver. Sally, if you could come forward so we could see you as well. So, welcome to the School District of Amory. And I'm not sure if the board wants to say anything, but here they are, new people.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service and especially for driving bus. We so appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yes.
We could arrange Jessica's schedule so she could drive bus as well. No? Okay, just checking.
She's doing parent pickup though, so she's standing out there doing parent pickup.
I'd pick parent pickup too. Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, on to the consent agenda items. Who had the vouchers this month?
I had the vouchers, so I would make a motion we approve the consent agenda item.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, the vouchers are approved, and I do not see anyone sign up for community comments. And normally, we would go on to the administrative reports, but I think we are going to bump up the informational item of the audit review by Jonathan Sherwood.
I'd just like to first apologize for the state of my voice. I want to rest assured that it has nothing to do with COVID. It has everything to do with the Packer game on Saturday night. I'll take full responsibility for third down stops and fourth down stops. And my crowning achievement of the night was helping my brother catch the Aaron Rodgers game ball at the end of the night. So, I just have to retell that story as many times as possible, because I still can't believe that that happened.
Wow.
So, I will try to make this go as quickly and seamlessly as possible for you tonight.
I'm just wondering how much you're selling that on eBay.
It's pretty priceless at this moment. Family heirloom from this point forward.
Oh, for sure.
So, I'd like to start off my remarks by again just thanking Andrew and the rest of the district staff for all the work that they do to get ready for the audit, you know, especially in this year with the challenges of COVID and having us to do the majority of the audit remotely. It was just a big struggle, a big challenge, so thank you for all the work that it took to get ready for us. Before I dive into the very fun, interesting numbers side of the report, I'll just walk down the two-page report, which I know is projected as well. First item right away is just our audit report. So, that's the opinion that we as an auditing firm come in and place over the audited financial statements of the district. We issue what's known as an unmodified or a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that an independent auditor can place on the financial statements. That's the goal, that's required by DPI, so we're very happy to report that we're able to issue our audit report as being unmodified. Next, we do issue our management letter comment, which we take a look at the internal controls over the district and say, okay, what's working, what's not working? Are there any items that we need to bring up to the attention of the board? And we do have two items that we annually, this are similar comments that we've had in the past, but they are repeat items that we're going to bring up to your attention as well. The first is the just limited segregation of duties. Both of these items are very common, very expected for a district that is of your size. The reason that we have limited segregations of duty is just because all of the controls are segregated into one, you know, basically one overall item or one overall office at the district office. We try to separate things out as much as we can here at the district, but again, it just, there is additional reliance that would be required to eliminate that binding. At this time, we usually like to bring up the fact that everybody on the board is a good mitigating control over a segregation of duties issue that we do have here. So, your first item that when you are approving those vouchers, is a very important control to see at a district where board members are also authorizing them and reviewing dispersments so we know what's being paid by the district. The next item that we report is just material audit adjustments. This just means that through the course of our audit, we propose adjustments to the district's books in order to get them ready for the audit and financial presentation, the big thick bone report that we issue. The issue here is we just had a number of them that were large enough in scale that they made a material difference or would impact decision-making if somebody did not see those entries reflected in our statements. I am happy to report that the number of entries has decreased, and we have seen continued improvement from year to year over the last couple of audits, so we look for that continued improvement going forward as well. Next, we also then work as part of our audit, we do what's called a single audit, or it's a compliance audit, and this is required when a district receives over a certain level of federal funding that's received during the year. And in this case, we did our single audit testing, and we did not find any compliance items that needed to be reported, so that's a very good sign for both federal and state programs. The other items that we do as part of our audit is we file what's known as the 1506 AC. These are the DPI required annual reports, so we assist the district in filing those with EPI on your side, and then I have to go out as an independent auditor and certify those results as well on our side. And then lastly, we issue or we prepare the federal data collection form, and that goes hand-in-hand with that single audit, and we're reporting back to the federal government all of the federal aid that was received by the district during the year. And now moving forward with just some of the actual financial results for the year. Item number two says general fund, and for most people, you typically see these numbers and say, general fund is one set of numbers, and then you have what's referred to as the special ed fund, Fund 27. For the reporting purposes and the discussion here tonight, this includes both Fund 10 and 27 together reported as one fund. So, when I'm looking at this balance sheet summary, I usually look for trends, you know, where are these numbers moving from year to year? So, it's a nice four-year comparison, so we can kind of see some trend analysis. And the biggest item to kind of take a look at is just where your cash and investments balance has been staying for the last couple of years. We've noticed an increase from 2017 through 2020 that your cash balance on hand is up to about $3.6 million as of a certain date of time of June 30th. And the really main reason why that did increase by that dollar amount, so you go a little bit further down, you can see that you've got short-term notes payable outstanding as well of about $2 million at the end of the year. So, we had a short-term borrow at the end of the year in order to, you know, make sure that we had proper cash flow and proper reserves at the end of the year. So, I wanted to highlight that because we do have to utilize here, we do utilize that short-term borrowing tool, which is not a problem by any means, but it does allow you to have, you know, if you're going to ask me as an independent auditor, what would be something that you can consider or do differently, or just a different way of looking at your financial statements? It leads into the next part of the discussion of the, what is it, three lines at the very bottom of the page that are highlighted for you. So, this is how we actually look at a school district and say, what is the financial health of a school district? How are we doing overall? You're looking at your unassigned fund balance number there, about $2.7 million, and we compare that to what your total expenses are, basically your operational expense to educate, you know, your regular ed and special ed funds overall. That's about $22 million for the year. And then we just calculate that ratio of how much true reserves do we have at the end of the year that unassigned fund balance? How much of our operating costs could we fund based on our reserves? We calculate that ratio of about 12.3%. The district policy has a district of what that ratio should be at a minimum amount, and we're happy to report that you're meeting your 5% minimum fund balance that the district, that the board has adopted from years ago. Us as CLA, we do about 30 districts in Northwest Wisconsin, and we do benchmarking. Where is the, where are all your peers in the area, you know, districts that are larger, smaller, but they're all in Northwest Wisconsin. Of all of those districts, the average of that ratio is about 27 to 28%. And that kind of falls in line with a recommendation, again, from a financial advisor, you know, me as an independent auditor. If I'm going to look at a district and say, what should that ratio be, you know, rule of thumb, we usually say about 25 to 30%. You know, three to four months of operating expenses is where anybody is going to say, that's a very financially healthy and stable district. You can obviously see that you're at 12.3%, which is not bad by any means, but if there's a room for an improvement or something that I would suggest, you know, you can take a look at as a financial measure, that number potentially could be increased. So, one of the reasons that I was bringing up your short-term borrowing earlier is that's one of the benefits that if you do increase this unassigned fund balance, that the first thing off the top that it definitely improves is your cash flow situation throughout the year. So, that would eliminate that cash flow, short-term borrowing need, and then ultimately save on some short-term interest costs that you're incurring year after year. You can see at least the last two years, you've had to rely on that short-term borrowing at the end of the year. Some of the other benefits of increasing your unassigned fund balance would then just ultimately come down to if you have any major capital borrowing needs that are potentially coming down the pipeline. If you improve that unassigned fund balance percentage, it typically will reduce a bond, bond issuance costs, there by increasing your bond rating, make you a better credit risk for any potential lenders. And then also, it would, you know, it's liquid cash flow, so maybe you wouldn't have to necessarily borrow a full percent of an entire project. You could basically cash finance some of that in the short term, reducing your overall borrowing if that's an option out there for you. So, I got nothing that's a concern by any means, but, you know, just an added comment for you if you're the decision-makers in the room, you know, if there's anything that you should be doing differently, or what are your peers in the area doing, that would be the focus that I at least noted in my review of your financial statements at the end of June 30th.
So, do you know our rating?
I don't know your rating offhand, but I mean, I can just make that generalization that if you had a greater fund balance, unassigned fund balance ratio, typically, your bond rating would be improved because of that.
Yep.
Any other questions when it comes to the general fund? Very good. I'll move on to item number three. The rest of the discussion is just going to highlight the activities of the rest of the operations of the school district. So, the item number three is your special revenue funds. So, they're termed that because all the revenue sources are set aside for a specific or a quote-unquote "special" reason. So, the first is your education trust fund. You'll notice that that, this is the year-end reserves of these activities as of 6/30. The special, the education trust fund, excuse me, the fund balance at the end of the year looks like it really drastically increased. And the main reason for that is because there was a change in accounting procedures that basically was required by DPI and accounting standard setters, where we had to move some activities that used to be recorded in your agency fund, your Fund 60, and it's now recorded, required to be recorded in your education trust fund. So, that's what the major difference there is. Overall, I think the actual reserves, all the activities out of all of these activities during fiscal year 20, clearly, we can point to COVID is the reason why a lot of these high costs were going into these funds with not a lot of revenue that was generated in comparison. And that's exactly the trend that you're going to see here in the food service fund, Fund 50, and then your community service funds, your Fund 80s, all of the Fund 80s combined are matching the balances that you see there. And clearly, if we were still paying staff or paying for expenses, but those programs were shut down and not collecting fees, that's clearly the financial results that we're seeing here in the June 30th balances, the substantial decreases that we're seeing here as of 6/30/20. Next, the next item up there that's up here for us is the debt service funds. And what this basically means is we've got reserves in the district that are used for the required principal and interest payments year after year. So, clearly, we're meeting our principal and interest obligations, which are required by us, and this balance that you see here of 1.4 million will eventually dwindle down and basically be eliminated as all of your long-term debt obligations get paid off. So, that $1.4 million is set aside for future debt service needs between January 1st and basically today of when your next debt service payments are due. Item number five is your capital projects funds that we are reporting. It's a long-term capital project fund that was established by DPI a number of years ago. 2017 is when we first established that fund. We funded it with just a simple $500 just to get the clock started, so to speak, of when we could, you know, put the funds into this capital projects fund, and then we can actually use them after a designated period of time, which was established by DPI. So, as of June 30th/20, we have $180,000 available to us, and the more you fund it and the more interest that you have there, obviously, you can use for those long-term capital needs down the road. Lastly, we have all of the long-term debt obligations for the district, and you see that overall, your debt service requirements have decreased over time. The district's been very diligent about paying down their debt and not necessarily issuing any new debt, so that's why you obviously can see that your total outstanding balances have decreased. Your general obligation bonds there, that $1.3 million, that'll all be paid off or it'll come due through 2023 is when those, all those bonds will finally be paid off. And actually, a large chunk of that $1.3 million actually gets paid off in the current fiscal year, and then you only have actually a very small balance of those general obligation bonds left that will be paid back through 2023. The general obligation note, there's actually only one note outstanding, and that's, those payments are due through 2020, 2024, excuse me, so that's when that $255,000 will become due is through 2024. The other large issue that, large balance that you have out there outstanding are quite a few capital leases that have been taken out throughout the years to find, to short-term finance and capital asset additions. So, that's where the capital leases under that long-term debt, long-term debt second section there of $353,000. The majority of those leases will be paid off through 2021, so the current fiscal year is when all of those obligations will be paid back in full. The only number, the only other number that kind of really does swing things quite a bit is the final line there, and I just want to draw attention to it because it's a non-cash item, it's, there's no decisions that the board has ever made that impacts that number. It's just the fact that, you know, we at the school district of Amory here, we participate in the WRS system, and that's the obligation, or in this case, it's actually an asset where the WRS system in total is very well-funded down, you know, the statewide system down to Madison is extremely well-funded, and in 2020, we actually had more assets on the books than we did have overall liabilities. So, that's why we have an asset there that we're reporting in 2020, and that really does flip the numbers from one year to the next as far as comparability goes. But all of that hoopla comes down to the final ratio that we have on the page there. That's your state statute, Wisconsin borrowing capacity limit there. You're limited to borrowing of general obligation debt of about 10% of all equalized value within the district. So, we currently are only using 1.5% of that legal debt limit. For a school district, it's very unusual that you'd ever approach 100% of that, obviously, because that would just, you know, skyrocket tax rates. So, I usually look at anywhere between 25, 35%. If that number got up to that range, you would be, in my opinion, pretty highly, highly leveraged. So, clearly, we're sitting here at June 30th/2020, and we're using 1.5% of that statutory limit, which basically says that if there should be a need to go out and, you know, issue some bonds, you clearly have the borrowing capacity available under Wisconsin statute. Outside of that, I don't have any other comments or issues to raise for you, but if there's any questions from the board or anybody else, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Our debt at 1.5, what's that compared to the other districts, those that you, that we were compared to the fund balance? Do you know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a standard of what all the rest of them would be. I could definitely get that number and pass it along to Andrew, but your 1.5% is extremely low as compared to the majority of the others. You can usually think that, you know, if you look to your neighbors, anybody that had a very large construction project, you know, that had to go out for referendum, you know, new school buildings, that kind of thing, they typically are upwards of 25 or 30% when it comes to that leverage ratio. But you're sitting here at 1.5%, and it's probably one of the lowest ones that, you know, I'm directly involved in for sure.
Yep. Yep. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us.
Safe travels.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I guess we'll move back to and start with administrative reports.
I have two quick little items, and then I'll have, you can keep walking, mine won't take long. First, just an update on the matrix numbers. We are in green. You have that in front of you, and Becky, perhaps you could flash that on the screen. In this particular window, which started last week Wednesday, we are at a total of 105 cases in the county and six in the district, which at that rate of growth, we would probably continue to be in the green. Our next benchmark's the 27th, which is next Wednesday. We'll see where we stand at that point in time. And the second, Lene Seaman, school nurse, and I are working with Polk County Health in regards to vaccination. We are told by the state and by Polk County Health that after the essential workers that are long-term care facility employees and health professionals, that educators would be next on the list. We are working to determine when that will be. We've got all of our staff who are interested in vaccinating, vaccination, they have declared their interest, and we're simply waiting to get that done. We're hopeful sooner rather than later. You're up, Mr. Gold.
Okay, well, I'll just tell you that things are rolling along great at the high school. Couldn't be happier with how things are going. We've had a couple of great weeks, starting to get some other activities going on, so the sports are going very well, jazz choir is having practice tonight, jazz band's getting fired up soon, other activities are starting to happen. So, definitely getting a feel of normalcy there, and that's a great thing. First semester ends for us on Friday, and students and staff are wrapping things up. We've got in-service on Monday, and then we've got some big days coming up specifically for our juniors coming up. We've got January 27th, we have our practice ACT test. It gives us great data as to what we really need to work on with individual students. It gives us an overall picture, and it just gives the juniors a chance to try something out before we take the actual one in March. And then we'll be spreading out our ACT prep sessions throughout the month of February and trying to get the, basically, the students relaxed and calm and to make them realize they've got the tools, they need to do this, and they'll be just fine. That's it from the high school.
Mr. Gold, how are we handling practice ACT for the juniors who are online school?
For those that are online, the practice test they can do online, and we've got a PDF and the, everything they need prepared to go out to them, so anybody that wants to stay home and take it at home will be able to do so.
Are they going to need to come in to take the actual ACT?
Yes, that they'll have to do, and that we have no choice on. But I've talked to a number of them already that are out and no problems. Some of the kids that are out on remote are actually even going to be coming in for the prep sessions. Some of the sessions we're doing in the auditorium, so we can, we can have 25 feet in between students if necessary there, so they're excited for that. Thank you.
Well, once again, I can kind of echo what Josh was saying. We've had a good return, and we're really glad to have the kids back, and I would say it's going very well. Similar to Josh, we are getting ready in, for state testing in our building as well across the whole district. In addition to the ACT, we'll have the ACT Aspire coming in at the high school. We have the forward tests that we're getting ready for. Our, at my building and I believe at Orr's building, the training for staff is going to come sooner than it has in the past because of the in-service wave falls, but we're training staff very soon, next week. And then we also have required sessions that the students have to go through on training, and we're scheduled those to start at the beginning of March, so we have some time. And there, we have invited the kids in that are at remote to come in for those sessions. We could deliver some of that at home too, but I think it would be better if we could get them to come in for part of that. They are required to come in to test as well. We're also starting the access test, and the access test is a test for students that are English language learners, and it tests their proficiency and growth in English and not just reading, writing, their ability to speak and listen. And so, that's another test that we have that will be coming out very soon. For our eighth graders, freshman registration night is coming up, and I know the high school has a little bit of a different program where it's going to be mostly students that are going through the evening sessions at school. We're also bringing in counselors over to the middle school in classes to go over everything, how credits work, how the registration process is going to work. And then the kids will get their forms to take home to their parents and go over with them. I believe the high school will be sending out an invite very soon. Josh, do you have a date on when that's coming? The registrate, for freshman registration? Yeah, but there should be an invite coming out real soon. Okay. Gifted and talented quiz bowl, we're available, that's one of the fun activities that our sixth graders really look forward to, the, starting the middle school quiz bowl will be starting this, in the next couple of weeks, and that runs for about six weeks long, and it's a great way for those kids to get into some academic competition. We're in the middle of a goal-setting process with our kids, so we're doing our mid-year check-in, and there we not only talk about academic goals, but then personal goals and what the kids could do to better themselves in all areas of their life. And it's pretty interesting seeing what they come up with, and these are forms that we track, and then eventually, we could send home when they're done. So, those are kind of the real big things coming up at the middle school at this time. Any questions?
Go Packers.
Go Packers, no.
He said it.
I'm not a Packer fan, but I'm not, I'm not, I don't cheer against them, but I think most Packer fans cheer against them.
Very diplomatic.
Not an anti-Packer.
I think you're right, Mr. Benson. So, I won't repeat what Tom already has. We're definitely will be ready for testing. We did, though, just finish this last week of benchmark testing, where each of the teachers will do reading, math, and writing for benchmarking. So, we'll be taking a look at those scores. We won't be surprised if they have taken a dip, but we'll definitely be looking at those. Something fun that is being produced by our music department is, if you've had a little third grader, you would know that they usually did the Christmas, third grade Christmas program, got to dress up, I always called it third grade prom because that's what it looked like. And of course, we weren't able to have that, but we are going to do an online version of it. Each classroom will have two songs, and Tracy Hendrickson is helping to put that all together, work her magic, and so be looking for that. We don't have quite a date for release, but that will be something that's coming up. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to echo the sentiments of the previous principals, that kids are thrilled to be back in school, it's so exciting to see their little faces through their eyes. Today, I had, the growing pain we have is they're not used to a full day of instruction. So, today, I had a little kindergartner actually fall asleep in the chair while I was visiting with him, and he literally like slumped over, so I guess our conversation wasn't too exciting. Congratulations to Mrs. Heningsgard. She wrote a music education grant for, through the St. Croix Valley Foundation, and received $1,625 for keyboards for kids, and those keyboards are going to be shared between the elementary and intermediate schools, so all of those children will benefit from her work, so we're very happy about that. Our teacher in-service day is coming up on Monday, and something you will hear a lot about the remainder of this year and going into next year is our English Language Arts adoption for the pre-K through fifth grade, and our teachers will be working on Monday on identifying the essential standards from the new English Language Arts standards that just came out in 2020. So, that will be fun work for all of us. And something very fun that's happening at the elementary school right now, we have a reading incentive program. As you know, every year at this time, we do a reading incentive program. However, this year, it is a virtual event, and I have to credit Carrie Shu, our reading specialist, and her committee. They are putting on a virtual reading road trip, so the kids for one month, every week, they are traveling in Wanda the Warrior car to a different location in the United States. So, their first stop was in Montana, where they went on a virtual ski trip. Their second trip is Arizona, where they're going to go for a hike in the desert. They're going to go to Florida, the Kennedy Space Center, and then end up in New York City. And in every stop, there's a virtual experience for our kids. So, it's pretty exciting, and today, the kid, was the first day the kids brought in their first yellow slip, and they were so excited to participate in that. So, it's very, very exciting that they came up with a creative way to still hold our reading incentives program. And just a little update on, it's semester time, and so, if you recall, at the beginning of the school year, we had about 38 students at the elementary school in Calvert, and we are down to seven families that will be finishing the year with And we are down to seven families that will be finishing the year with Calvert doing a great job. Those seven families are doing a great job. So we went from 38 down to seven. Everybody else is back in school. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, as far as special education, certainly not to minimize the four months remaining of a very challenging school year that we have yet to come here. But special education case managers are beginning to prepare for the 2021 and 2022 school year, of which we'll have the open enrollment report to come up with tonight. So we're looking forward and we're doing a lot of things as far as evaluating instructional spaces, getting equipment in place for those students that might have more complex needs or services that are transitioning from one building to another. Section 504 is going really well. Quick update with that, as you know, a couple of years ago, we shifted all those plans to our Oasis data platform and our student success coordinators have case managed those files for going on the second year here. And just like to put a big thank you out there for Ms. Julie Montgomery Reese, Ms. Becca Pearson, who are doing a great job communicating with all the building level teams to make sure that those plans are, are in place, that they're reviewed and updated periodically. We're, we've got the School Based Mental Health Grant going in, I believe it's third year at this point. And one of the services that have dovetailed with that is something called the Compassion Resiliency Toolkit. That's something that's been developed through DPI and it's a professional development tool really to help staff members build a culture in their schools that really acknowledges self-care, resiliency. And when your reserves are low, especially in these very stressful times, having employees and teachers take stock of where they are at mental health-wise, physically as well so that they can have the energy to continue to support students that are struggling. And finally, you hear an echo in this room, Forward Exam is coming up. What does that mean in terms of special education? It's really getting the accommodations in place, verifying those accommodations through the IEP process and then making sure that that's communicated through the Forward Exam Test Engine Portal and so that those accommodations are there and useful and practical and helpful for those students when they need them. I don't think I have any other updates, so any questions?
You talked about the Compassion Resiliency Toolkit. Can you just tell us a little bit more on that? Is that for, that's for staff, for self-care? Is it, how does that work? Can you explain it a little bit or?
There are, it, it's intended for all health and human service workers. So it's not just teachers, it's not just one employee group. It's, it would be open for all employees in the school district. And it's really, there are modules that focus on different aspects of managing stress, managing your physical health, how to have difficult kinds of conversations with colleagues, how to develop resiliency and, you know, vulnerability in, in conversations if you're not doing so very well, to be able to bring that to your supervisor, to your colleagues to de- develop really more of just a, a more positive and caring culture of a school district in our building.
And this is accessed online or?
There, there are modules on, online typically. I think the plan that I've last reviewed with the team would be that we would have modules, but they would be facilitated by our in-house team, our counselors or our student success coordinators.
And when would this be implemented, you know?
I'm thinking we're going to try to get this underway over the, this year yet, but I'll have to check in with Katie in the School Based Mental Health Grant.
And that would, would that count as professional development hours as well?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for administrative reports. The next item on the agenda, legislative update.
Okay, a couple of things that are happening in Madison in the legislature and in the governor's house. Tony Evers has stated aloud and the Assembly and the Senate is looking at increased dollars for broadband. When we went virtual in March, the, probably the single biggest complaint, other than I want my kids to be in school, was internet. The effectiveness of internet with multiple folks on, speed and accessibility. So $200 million is the number that Tony Evers has put out there earmarked specifically towards broadband and specifically in rural areas, which would be us. Assembly Bill 1, which has sort of become a code name for the COVID Relief Bill, that's being worked through the legislative process by the Assembly and the State Senate and the Governor's House. And a couple of things that relate to education, rehiring of annuitants, meaning retiring of retirees, reducing that number of days from 75 days to 15 days. Right now, if they retire, they're technically, day one is July 1st, so July, August, that doesn't make them eligible until the middle of September, which doesn't help us a lot for a September 1st school year. For critical positions, they haven't defined what critical is. In my mind, critical is, we need you to be here and you're excellent, so please come. But that hasn't been defined for us yet. And second, they don't have to suspend their annuity when they come back. Right now, they have to suspend their annuity, as in they cannot collect their retirement dollars if they're working. And this legislation would allow them to serve as a long-term sub perhaps and continue to collect their annuity. Hasn't been passed yet, but that's what's happening in Madison.
All right, the last department report is the School Nutrition Report by Stacy Nelson.
Hello. So I'm reporting on last fiscal year, so of school year 2019, 2020. Also known as when things got a little crazy. So I'm just going to kind of go over what we've been up to. You can go to the next slide. And then the administrative review, we were reviewed on our summer food service program last, this past summer. And then just numbers and finances and open for questions. So I started off the year thinking it was going to be like every other normal year with great ambition and we tried to add a little more local foods into our offerings. We were able to offer the kids a taste test of Romanesco, which was from Turnip Rock Farms here in Amory. We participate in the Great Lakes Apple Crunch and we receive apples from Baker's Orchard. And then I also started getting some local beef from Roos Farms. And then I always try to add some new things to the menu and one of the favorites were, is in that picture there, was our Parmesan roasted carrots with a sriracha aioli. Thumbs up is, was the consensus. So when things got crazy, we kind of put a halt on that. So COVID-19 happened. My staff were wonderful and the bus drivers were wonderful. As that was short-lived, we did offer meal delivery. We had great community support. I had support from the administrative team. It was really kind of an awesome thing to see that in all of the crazy, everyone pulled together to make it work to feed the kids. I have numbers later on as far as how many meals got sent out, but we've become pros at it, so we're ready for whatever comes next. We also got, I wanted to not forget to thank the Transportation Department for helping. Burnett Dairy for their very generous donations. Ellsworth Creamery, and then we also partnered up with the UW Extension and we were able to provide fresh produce boxes to the families. New equipment that came last year in the fiscal year. We replaced a very ancient Combi oven at the middle school. So that's the shiny oven that you'll see on the left. Just putting it out there that we have some really old equipment that is going to need to be replaced, probably sooner than later. The elementary, they are working on one of their ovens. It's a double-decker. It's actually the one by the two kettles because that's also at the elementary. Those are both original with the building, which Ms. Meyer can attest that I believe it's 1967. So they're working on very old equipment, not reliable. They make it work. They also have the highest meal volume, so it's something that will have to be looked at soon. And then also the high school, they have the oven that's right next to the fancy new one there on that slide and that is also going to need to be replaced. Both of the oven decks have not been having equal heating and that makes it hard to please our customers because we have some burnt spots on our pizza. And that oven is actually from 1975.
So just so I can get it clear in my mind, we have an oven at the elementary school from 1967?
Yes, we have that oven and then those two big kettle cookers are also from 1967.
You made clear Cheryl wasn't here in 1967. I don't want her to feel old.
And do you have estimates for any of that stuff, Stacy, or have you?
Um, we just replaced the one at the middle school and I believe Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, that one ran about 20,000.
Is that going to be what you want to replace the other, these ones that are in the elementary and the high school?
I think it would be nice at the elementary for sure, just because I know their steamer has been causing problems and Cheryl can probably attest to that too, that there's been some howling noises coming from the kitchen. And it's just our steamer. So the Combi oven can, it cooks in like a dry heat and also a moist heat, so it would be able to do both.
And you're like, same size there or different?
I think the elementary would need a bigger one.
Right.
Like a double-decker one, so that I would have to get an updated estimate.
When we did our facilities assessment and our walkthroughs in our buildings with George and Troy, that's heck almost a year ago now, the elementary and high school both rose to the, the, the at-risk list very fast and kitchen equipment is on that list in both cases because it's 1967, what makes that a 54-year-old oven?
Will the new ovens last 54 years?
If it follows the trends of all of the other things that are produced, my guess would probably be no, but we can hope.
And I will say that through Stacy's guidance and, and expertise, that they do run a pretty good fund balance in there that they can absorb purchasing equipment. Take into account the last two years here, this year and last year with COVID, out of the equations, they've always, you know, done a fabulous job of, you know, adding to their fund balance and, and that's a testament to her and controlling costs and kids want to eat her meals and all the above. So definitely it's, it's, we're in a good position here from a food service standpoint financially, so.
Yeah, I think it would be prudent to get the estimates in, bring those to the, pass those on to Dr. Dierfler and we'll get those on the agenda.
Okay, perfect.
I agree.
54 years is about time.
My ladies will be so pleased.
There's, you know, I guess you got your, got your money's worth out of it, there's no need to have.
Yeah, yeah. And shout out to the maintenance crew too, because they helped make that happen. Here we go to the next slide. So the administrative review looked very different than years past. This was just specifically for the summer program. The things that they look at, they look at our applications, they look at our work with the Health Department, civil rights, training, monitoring, site eligibility, meal counts, our claims, incoming expenses, just a long list of things. And I was very pleased that they only found that I, in the crazy of March and the transitions, forgot to alert the media that we were providing free meals. So that was one thing that was noted. And also there was kind of some claim confusion based on us offering the bulk meals and what month it should fall under, but all of it was fixed and there was no fiscal action required. And then moving along, this is our numbers for the 1920 for our school breakfast. Obviously, this only goes from September to March 16th when we transitioned because then the meals were served under the summer program. Looking at the numbers from the year prior, the participation was about the same, so we were on track to have pretty much the same participation and program outcome. We have a 40% participation rate for breakfast, which is higher than some districts, so we'll just keep, keep trying to get them to eat their breakfast. The next slide shows the school lunch program. That was also looking to have higher participation. It went up by 1%. Last year it was 65% participation in the district. And this last year it was at 66%. And then here's our big numbers from doing the summer food service program. So it operates in the 1920 fiscal year, so it has July and August. And the numbers on that, the July claim was combined with the August claim because there were just seven days in that month. And then from March to June, we were operating under the bulk meal packaging and then we also had Open Backup Clubhouse and then we also had, well, that was it then. And so just for fun, then the total meal packages that we had sent out throughout this pandemic period and then counting into this school year because they extended the free meals, we've served 95,473 breakfasts and 106,979 lunches. So my staff deserve all the props for that.
Good job keeping the kids fed.
Yeah, a huge number.
Yeah. So right now, our current free and reduced numbers are on the next slide. District-wide, we're at 37%. Because the meals were free and, or they were all free already this school year, we haven't seen as many applications coming in. However, families are listening and they might qualify. If they do send in their free and reduced meal applications and they qualify, they can get free milk break. They will help us re-qualify for the summer food service program, which as of right now, we're not re-qualified for and our cutoff is June 30th. So we need applications in.
Stacy, do you see any of this changing for the free lunch based on new administration coming in or is this set for the year no matter what?
Well, this, we pull the free and reduced numbers monthly to see where we're at. It has nothing to do with administration. This is based off of families turning in their applications and getting them back to us.
Right, but I mean, do we anticipate, do we, do we think that, that the free will fall for everybody all year or is that something that they can, can they choose to revoke that and then we would have to have those applications where, when families would start paying again?
I never even thought of that. I hope they don't change it.
Is it supposed to be right now through that?
Yes, right now, so right now the, they have extended the waivers all the way through June 30th. So we can offer the free meals through then, but then after then, we had to have a higher than 50% free or reduced rate to re-qualify to provide those free meals during the summer like we have been. And we haven't had that number since 2016 because I look for it and then if I can find one, I can update the contract for that program and we get extended for five more years. But I haven't, we haven't been there.
Is there a way to let parents know who have traditionally been on free or reduced lunches to let them know that they need to turn in an application? Because I get the messages and everything that the kids have free lunch through June or free food, but you know, that's it. And I'm just wondering if, I mean, you said you need applications, so is there a way to get the word out to turn them in regardless of the fact that, I mean, there's no incentive. to do an application if they know they're going to get free food until June.
Right, and that's why we've seen the downfall. I actually crossed it off my list today to get some media pieces going out and have worked with Tracy Hendrickson. And I have asked Michelle Moore, who does the phone call, to add that into the message that if you have your free reduced application, please send it in. It will qualify your young students for free milk breaks because there are benefits to it for them. And then it also helps us with other funding as well.
Seems almost like, like it should get extended a year because I bet the applicants will come in after that free program ends, you know? But like you said, there's not a lot of incentive. But I think after that ends, then people will say, oh, you know?
Yeah.
I think a lot of people are going to qualify for that too now if, because of.
Because of different changes.
The income, COVID, you know, everybody's income is probably down. Because you get people lost their jobs or laid off. So I'm still assuming we still do family folders and all of that thing, right? At the, so we have announcements that can go out in family folders, I would guess, and things like that.
Yep, I can send you guys the, the little marketing things that I made. Okay.
That'd be fabulous.
All right, and now the fun money part. So our beginning fund balance, like Andy had said, was healthy to begin with. Our revenues and expenditures are listed. The any fund balance went down. And like the accountant said too, or the auditor had mentioned, most of it results from COVID. We paid our staff in the spring. We didn't have as much revenue coming in even with the meal packages. And we had all of our staff being paid. We also offered a premium to those that were working so that they continued to come and work. There's also food cost increase, food pack, food packaging cost increase and supplies. My case of gloves cost went from $30 a case to almost $100. So that really hits you hard when you have to wear gloves. And then we also lost revenue from catered events à la carte and clubhouse childcare. And then we also had purchased that oven from, at the middle school. So I was expecting to not see it as healthy and increasing based off of that.
And I will say just back to giving credit due, that I was on a call today with several business managers talking about, they're scrambling about with their food service really has lost a lot of money at their districts and what they're going to do, what, you know? So I mean, here, I mean, if you take the purchase of the equipment out of it, we really, you know, less than 10,000 from breaking even. You know, and I thought that that's just amazing to me. I didn't expect to see it that good, to be honest. And it's the same, same with this year. We're, you know, we're, just have our struggles this year with revenue expenses. And, and as you would expect, I, I think it'll come through and not be as bad as Stacy thinks, but we'll see, so.
I may stress out a little bit about that.
We'll be fine.
So PLE tool for the 21, 22 year, I have not heard anything about that. As far as just kind of comparing previous years and balances, it is lower than normal. And it would be the same reasons that I had just explained in the previous slide. So I'll probably see you guys again soon with PLE tool. And then to where credit is due, like I mentioned, we had a lot of support from the community, but these ladies were the ones that really made, made my job easier and fed the kids. So I'm very thankful for them. And then we also had some outsiders that really helped out a lot too. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Stacy.
All right, onto informational items. We already had the audit review. So the next informational item on the list is the high school gymnasium floor.
I feel like every time I come up here, I'm asking for something, so.
Because you are.
Doesn't mean you're going to get it.
Stacy was asking for something that is 54 years old. I'm only asking regarding something that is 44 years old. Uh, we're running full tilt right now in athletics. It's a very busy week. It's been a busy winter, kind of a crazy winter. But appreciate your guys' support. I'm sure you've been able to follow some of our squads on the, the live stream. Tracy Hendrickson's doing an awesome job. I don't know how many board meetings have three cameras going. We have three cameras at athletic events. We're knocking on ESPN's door, so. To help brighten that picture, I want to talk a little bit about the high school gym floor. It's, like I said, it's 44 years old. It's the original floor. It's, uh, first of all, it, it's a classroom. It might be the classroom that is used the most in the high school. When you look at on a calendar year, 365 days, there's people in there during the day, in the evenings, weekends. Constantly being used. We use it obviously for athletics, athletic events, practices. It's where we hold graduation, assemblies, large events. Kind of our focal point, I would say, at the high school is our, is our gym floor. The condition of the floor, I mentioned, 44, 45 years old. It's similar, it's like playing on concrete, to be completely honest with you. I get a lot, I get on a lot of gym floors throughout the winter. There's not a whole lot underneath our floor. Floors are built significantly different nowadays than they were 45 years ago. I had one of the contractors kind of show me around a little bit. And we have like a concrete, it's like a clip and channel floor is what we have. And he said, this sucker is not moving. So tornado comes through, that thing's not moving, that's a good thing. But when you see one of our players hit the deck and you kind of hear that crash, there's no absorption, there's no vibration, there's dead spots on the floor. I mean, when you walk across it, it creaks. It's 45 years old, just like a wood floor in your, in your house if it was that aged. So definitely something that, that we need to look at. We've talked about potentially sanding it down one more time. It's probably with our gymnasium, it's going to run you in that $30,000 to $35,000. You could maybe get seven more years out of it. But talking with George and a couple of the contractors, not really looking like there's even that much left to sand down. It's been sanded down half dozen times already. And, you know, it, it does look nice, but it doesn't mean it changes anything underneath it. And we're looking to add some more technology underneath there to help with that vibration and absorption and just better for the kids who are on it every day. I'm not saying these kids are professional athletes and we need to have a perfect floor for them. But, you know, teachers, FIAE students, our athletes, it looks significantly different on a lot of those newer floors. I talked about sanding it down. Obviously the other option would be, you know, potentially installing a new floor. The reason we're having the conversation right now, typically we have these conversations in the spring with more of our building and grounds items is because if we want to get it installed by next fall and be ready for our volleyball season, we have to make a decision sooner rather than later. I have had a couple of the guys called that we have quotes on checking in to see where we're at because they're starting to get some yeses from school districts. And obviously the sooner you say yes, the sooner you get on their installation list for the summer. So I have three bids that I have seeked out for this project. Basement floors, Jay Wood Sports Flooring, and then Schmidt Custom Floors, no relation to Becky. But the Jay Wood floors are out of Hudson. They've put in the flooring in our elementary school. They put the flooring in at the new Prescott High School. They put the new flooring in at Hudson's High School. They also did Grantsburg. Been on all those floors. I went up and visited Grantsburg this summer with one of the gentlemen from Jay Wood. A fan of their technology and got like a plywood. And then they got stuff in between the plywood, another plywood later. And then you got your, your maple flooring. It's kind of like a foam looking technology, looks much different than our clip and channel that we currently have. You guys have been able to see, it looks like you guys have the bids in front of you right now. I'm going to say I'm not an expert on these floors. I have talked over with George and what his thoughts are. And we're very confident with Jay Wood, the company out of Hudson, that we have a prior relationship with. And we've seen the work that they've done in our local area schools also.
So what you see here are three bids and this is an informational item. There is no obligation to choose a bid here this evening. We wanted you to have the information so you can make an educated choice in February. And that choice may be, we're going to leave the floor as is and we're going to sand it. Or it could be one of the three you see here. Or it could be the recommendation that Jeff is giving. Again, the reason we're doing this now as opposed to April and May, we won't get on the calendar if we do it in April and May. This purchase, if it occurs, would be part of the $700,000. That's from the April of 2017 referendum. It was on the list that you saw a couple of months back. We just now have numbers and bids to go with that. So questions for Jeff if you have them at this time?
Do you know what the, what the difference is between bid number one with basement floors? And then bid number two with Jay Wood floors? Do you know what the difference is there? That's a pretty big price difference.
So they, a lot of times they'll show you that they have six different floors that they can bring in. I mean, everything from a multi-purpose room to what they put down, you know, where the Milwaukee Bucks play. So it's just, you know, they all have their different grades. Usually there's six floors. I asked them, we were looking at most of the floors that were in that model four range. Again, they have about six different models that they'll bring. And they all have a little different package. None of them are the exact same. Just really depends on the company and what they have to offer. But, I mean, I can't specifically tell you between basement, Jay Wood and Schmidt, the different technology that they're using. But I did ask them to give me quotes on typically number four out of their six different models.
What is a new volleyball sleeve color?
We, we have, I don't know, maybe it was several years ago, we got new volleyball poles and they're, where we insert them. It's like a $200, is that what it is? Like where we insert them, we needed to expand that to fit our new current volleyball nets. But I believe that's like a $200. Most of them put that in their, in their bids.
One of them mentions, basement mentions, some, some smaller communities performed removal of bleachers in-house to lower cost. Is that something that we would think about doing or is that?
Well, they said, they said you can absolutely have this project in terms of the tear out. But he said with the clip and channel is, I mean, they're going to have to have heavy equipment in there to lift that out and rip it out. They said you're more than welcome to, but they said that is what drives your cost up is trying to get that out of there. So I don't personally believe that we have the equipment to get it out of there. But he's, he did, I mean, all of them did say that, you know, it'll be much cheaper if you can take care of that on your own. But I personally don't believe that we have the resources to do that.
Or the time or the personnel. Because when this would occur is right when we need summer cleaning to fire up. And that, that just wouldn't work. So you'll see this again in February. Again, you can make whatever decision you see fit at that time. And we'll move forward from there and potentially have it on the calendar or have sanding on the calendar.
And if we have specific questions, these, all three of these sales are up have volunteered. They can come in here and answer questions if you guys have specifics and you want to see the different models of flooring that they have. That's something that they could go through if you need that information.
Yeah, the bids are far apart from cheapest to highest.
And I think there's almost a $80,000 to $90,000 difference between the highest and the.
Yeah. So I guess that makes me wonder. And then like you said that you and George kind of talked about this and you thought that Jay Wood was kind of what your recommendations were. And do you know why that was your recommendation over the other two?
Honestly, it's by, I, I emailed other school districts. I emailed Prescott, I emailed Hudson, had conversations with them about their flooring and how that has responded since they've put that in. They've had nothing but good things to say. George said that here, that was a positive experience in our elementary school. They're local, so if something does happen, you know, the guy was talking to me about water damage. And if you have this floor, you got to rip the whole thing out. And if you have this floor, we don't have to rip everything out. I thought about those situations too where, you know, it's nice to have somebody local. Schmidt, I believe, is on the east side of the state. So, yeah, I, I mean, in a purchase like this, numbers are very important. But I also think their reputation and what we know about them. I'm not saying those other two don't have a positive reputation, but we have a relationship with Jay Wood already.
Have you talked to anybody that's had floors done by like basement or the other one?
I, I have not.
Do they, had they provided references of where they've done work?
I mean, they, they have it to me directly. I'm sure I could find that information out.
Could you get references of where they've done work from the other two companies?
Sure.
And this is the great benefit of having this as an informational item. And then next month you can make a decision. At least we can do our legwork and make a smart decision when it's that kind of money.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's still time. February still gets us on the calendar potentially for July.
Yeah, I think, you know, then we can have those, that information, you know, for another month to look at. And then, so if you could get some of that stuff or if you've talked to some of the references that they provide where they, and see what they think with their two?
Sure.
And I'm sure I could pull it out from my previous, but maybe having that list of the items that were up for spending that referendum money on.
Sure. That, that again was a recommend, recommendation list. You haven't acted on it, but yeah, we'll bring it back. Yep, absolutely. That was November, I think.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fern.
Okay, the next informational item, the land purchase discussion.
Okay, back in October, Mr. Meyer presented to you a proposal for a school farm on the land, which is across the street, call it adjacent if you will, across the street. The land is presently for sale. There's, I believe, approximately 35 acres on that, in that spot, all in that area. It's the same land that we're building homes on presently. The conversation ended at that point in time. And then we have been spending a lot of time talking about COVID here in the months of November, December and on into January. Now, in further thought about this and in further conversation with a lot of stakeholders in this district, including some of you, perhaps it isn't about a land purchase, which is earmarked specifically for a farm and that's the only intent for the land. Perhaps the conversation is this. The land in which we are presently located on is a result of the forethought of the folks that were in charge of this place way back when. All of our schools being in one spot, all of our facilities, all of our complexes being in one spot is a rarity. And there is only one other spot that is adjacent and available to this land. We're not going towards Unisource and SMC. We're not heading towards our school forest and the Watermans. And we're not heading towards the residents that live to the north of us. The only spot is to the west. And perhaps the land could, could be for any number of things, a farm being one of those things. So that's the conversation at hand. And please know, this is but an informational conversation. We don't make a decision about that here this evening. But perhaps a decision could be made to purchase that land at some point in the future. So that's the conversation. I'm going to turn it over to all of you.
Well, Sean and I met with Lisa Novak just to get a better picture of the land property. And that's what the map that's being shown right now shows the outlying border of it. And then there are nine property identified lots on the west side of it. There is no road there. That's part of that plotted nine lots there. I, I agree with Sean. I mean, there's just, there's other things that could be used out there in the future. We don't even know what the future can be. It can be a building, science, health and wellness, sports. I mean, the opportunities are great, I guess I feel. And the, when you look at other schools that have farms, they bus them there. And, and if you got, that's the cool thing about us here is we can walk anywhere. The school forest, our sports, other buildings, you know? And if you got land that's close, you don't have to put kids on bus, you know? All schools can utilize this by foot. So I would, that's. So I would, that's, I'm, I'm the instigator of the investigation of this land. So that's what I, why, and, and I've talked to taxpayers and the one made an interest to come, he said, how much is a bus? And I says, about a hundred and ten. He goes, well, gee, that's a little over three buses over there, isn't it? And I'm like, yeah, buses wear out. And we just looked at a floor for 200,000 for a gym floor and, and which is good opportunity and we need those things too. And I'm just saying, you know, twenty years from now, we may be more than happy that we own that land. I don't know, but I'll let you guys talk.
In the one corner of this drawing here, the land where there's the nine lots?
Yep.
I don't know, has, did you say that road has not been extended at this time yet?
Yeah.
But it certainly could be.
Oh, yeah. They're, they're platted and recorded.
It's drawn in to where we intended.
Yeah, it's positioned to, to occur.
And those could be nine lots potentially used for our CTE program.
Sure. And remember the cost of the four lots that we purchased to build two homes, the last time we did it was 33,000.
Yep, right.
Now, that's looped into the cost of this and in each case, you're building a home, not just to hold on to it, but you're building a home to potentially sell it and that's money that goes right back into the endeavor. It isn't profit per se, it's money that goes right back into CTE construction, which is how we purchase more lots. This might solve that problem.
Right.
Yeah. But I'm making a mistake, building a road, sewer and water.
Yeah.
Costs money.
Sure, absolutely.
But if we already own the lots, that helps that out. You can, there's other access, there's like five different access points to this property from the road, different roads. You've got Otis and Hillcrest and Crest, and there's a couple of Valley in there and so there's multiple spots that can access this property.
No, sorry, go ahead, Char.
Go ahead.
Well, there is the conversation about you're taking that off of the tax base of the city. That's a very legitimate argument, but if you're building homes, you're adding to the tax base. We're going to add two times the tax base with the two homes that were present, the one we're building and the next one we're building next year. And that's going to generate income right there for the city and seven, eight, nine more lots would do the same. And I note the city feels the same, having had conversation with the city.
And I think some of the concern that was voiced before is that trying to negotiate on a price or negotiate a deal and not having money in hand to do that and waiting on grant money to do that, that we may or may not get was a concern, correct?
Yeah.
And then getting the grant money, then where is the money going to come from to do anything with it? So if we could write grant money to do something with the land rather than purchase the land itself and then the land would be of value and asset to the district where it wouldn't have necessarily been or had control over before, correct?
Yep.
My two cents on that is that in my experience around the state, finding adjacent land to an existing district is a rarity and unless you're moving your whole district, building a whole new school outside of town, which that's generally what happens nowadays, because everyone's built up around schools that are in town, it just doesn't happen where you have adjacent land like that.
I'm not sure that I've been in a district where all the buildings are in one spot.
Yeah.
I think it's that rare.
Just for, for security and everything else, an opportunity for kids that you know have the bus we talked about, like I said, I just, I have not seen that. I've never thought that would come available, but that's just amazing to me that that's available, you know, but.
If it was, you know, up, or if it wasn't just across the street, like he said, like, you know, the school would have to bus kids over there for the classes, which would cost...
Well, Derek and I visited New Richmond's farm and New Richmond's doing a wonderful thing down there. The construct of their schedule, they have forty-nine minute periods at the high school. It's next to the airport and if you're familiar with where the high school is, if you don't hit the lights right, you're ten minutes out there for sure, maybe fifteen and ten, fifteen back. Unless you have a double block, kids have twenty, thirty minutes out there. Where we have it right now at the high school, you got some eighty-five minute blocks, you're walking across the street. If that's what we choose to do with it, you got a good seventy-five minutes to work. Or you're doing something altogether different with it.
And, and just like private ownership, land's an investment. So I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's the values there, it's down the road that you want to sell it off, that's certainly an option too, you know, so that's, you certainly want to do things with it, but as time changes, you have the forethought of, like I said, that Sean said, that they bought this land to have on campus everywhere, you just, you don't, you don't know what's going to happen down the road. But some part of it where I've worked at a district where they sold land off down the road, but got it at a good rate and good price and that the forethought to know was worth getting in on it now. I mean, I'm not the expert on what land values will do, but certainly that's something that, that you take into account too, so.
And financially, how, do you pay for this then? Where, where is that coming in at?
Here are the ways that you do, you've already made reference to the one, you're, you're gathering grants, et cetera, to purchase the land. The problem with grants is right now a lot of things are on hold because COVID's put a lot of things on hold. The second manner by which you do it, you simply pay for it through your budget, which isn't always feasible because typically on a budget, you don't have, you know, thirty-five acres times $10,000 an acre sitting there in a budget unless you plan for that. Or you finance it in the same way that we just financed within the last two years our safety and security upgrade and pay it out over time and you finance it right through one of the financial institutions that exist right here in Amory. And I'm sure both of them would work with us if that's what we chose to do.
And looking at the, from the audit tonight, we are obviously in a position to go ahead and leverage that kind of dollar amount.
Sure. We're not a district of tremendous, of tremendous debt. If we were, I don't even think we would be having the conversation.
And like I said, you're even in a good position financially where you could pay part of it in, through the budget and the other part through the bank, you know, it, there's options, you know, to look at and certainly the, the professionals can help us assess what would be the best route to go if we decided to go that route, so.
How does that, if we were to finance that money, how does that put us in a position to take care of financially the upgrades or repairs that need to be met within the district for the buildings that are existing?
It's a very legitimate question, but I think we're talking apples and oranges. And here's the way I would say it. If you're talking about $350,000 for land as opposed to if you did elementary in high school, which is where our needs are biggest, that's 25 to 35 million. That would be like saying, I don't have money to pay for this $500 item versus saying, I don't have money to pay for this $25,000 item. That's the exponential difference. It's fifty times more. So to say that, well, you spent $350,000 on this, how come you don't have $25 million laying around? Who does? We would have to go to referendum if we're going to do those two buildings. That's not something anyone's going to finance through any budget anywhere in the state. So it's a very legitimate question, but they're really apples and oranges. So this is an informational item. We'll continue to gather information. No decision's going to be made outside of this entity and it would be right here in front of everyone to see what we're talking about and doing and we'll put it on the agenda again in the future and you can decide what you want to do.
Is there anything else that you've mentioned that you met with Lisa Novak and the owners? Is there anything else that you learned?
Well, we met with the owners and Lisa some three months ago and then we met with Lisa, who is the Realtor here in recent days, what, a week or so ago?
Yep.
Did you learn anything else new or not anything new?
Well, one thing that we, we learned is the possibilities of what this could be. Another thing we learned is the owners are interested in selling the land as one plot of land. They don't want to break it up into parts. I think that would just get really complicated for them. So that we learned. Anything else you wanted to share Keith?
I think that was it. It's just a great opportunity.
Thanks. All right. The next informational item is the school board election for April 2021.
Okay, we have two at-large positions that are going to be elected by our community here in the month of April and we have two applicants for those positions, Keith Anderson and Char Glenna. So I guess it makes early April far less complicated and unknown than it ordinarily could be. So that's happening in April and just so folks know, we've got two applicants, two candidates, I should say.
So far.
So far.
Never count your chickens.
Yes, there you go.
All right. The last informational item on the agenda, the first reading of the board policies.
Okay, well, we found some more obsolete policies for us to look at.
I saw that.
We've got media and other coverage of board meetings. This is policy 178. The portion that has been stricken from the record, if you will, may be videotaped at district expense. The videotape shall be aired on cable television and made available at the Amory Public Library for loan. Those days are over. So now it says will be recorded by the district and made available for viewing by the public because that's what we do. So that's the first. The second, policy 372 states about student publications following student produced, the board supports the following student-produced newspaper and annuals. We basically changed that, the board supports the publication of newspapers and annuals because that looks different than it did back when this policy was adopted back in The warrior in the Amarian looks different than it does now. School-sponsored information, school calendars typically, or originally it had said, which include basic school policies and information will be distributed the first week of school. Tracy Hendrickson's the point person on that, made available to the public prior to the start of school year. Those are always available and Tracy does an excellent job. We don't put all of the policies in there. Everything that you would need to know would be given to you by the building. There's just too much information to put in the calendar and I don't think people are looking at the calendar for policies. And then communicate from each building and through social media that they're available. And in technicality, the calendar, the item that most folks want, right on the website. So those are three first reading and we'll see those again next month unless you want to continue to have them on loan at the library, we can probably approve those next month.
I just looked at other policies regarding student publications and I'm sure this is done anyway. I don't know if we need to, if it needs to be put in, in writing, but a lot of school policies just state in their policy that the content would be reviewed by the supervising teacher and any questionable content could be reviewed by the principal. I mean, it's just...
I can add, or the advisor, I could add that.
I mean, I should have done it anyway, but it's from the other policies I reviewed when looking at these, that they just put that in there.
There are any number of stories you can find about things that ended up in yearbooks that shouldn't have ended up there, yes. Absolutely. Not here, not in my experience, but there are times.
No. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so now on to action items. The first action item, second reading of board policy 342.2.
So you looked at or reviewed the homebound visiting teacher instruction policy reading number one and then COVID struck in a big way and we never did a second reading. It hasn't been a game changer for us, but here is the second reading. Nothing's changed since the first time and you didn't have any recommended changes. So you simply need to vote to approve if that's what you want to do here this evening on this policy.
I'll make emotionally approve board policy 342.2.
I'll second that. Okay, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the second reading of board policy 342.2 is approved. The next action item is the 2122 open enrollment space limitations.
Okay, there are space limitations and Brad Baumgartner put this together and he can help us perhaps if there are questions. Per statute, the non-resident school board shall determine the number of regular education and special education spaces available and the only qualifier in essence that we have relates to early childhood special education and it states, at the present time, there are early childhood special education openings. The early childhood program provides itinerant services which include pullout and push-in special education services within the 4K setting as well as home-based services and community outreach services. The available slots for this program are 15, of which eight are currently filled. The district conducts child find activities throughout the year and the number of available spots will decrease. Based on the formula above the projected 2122 caseloads, the school board reserves the right to deny any open enrollment requests resulting in a number above 15. This by state, we're obligated to do if we want to limit any area and this is the only limitation that we have. And in the past, we've had other limitations. This one's been rather consistent. So you would need to move to adopt that if you so choose.
Move to adopt the open enrollment recommendations as presented for the early childhood special education program. Second.
All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the open enrollment space limitations is adopted and the next action item is the update to certified and support staff compensation and benefit guide.
Typically in the months of March and April, you see revisions to the compensation and benefit and handbook documents for certified staff and support staff. This is an exceptional case because when you made a round of review, when we did COVID, the Epsilon, the old, the old version of what COVID is, we accidentally omitted from the health insurance payment in lieu of on page four of the certified staff document where it states an employee who is covered by another employee's district-provided health insurance plan is not eligible for the in lieu of payment. That was crossed off and it shouldn't have been. I am not going to be in the business of just adding it back in and that you acted on it. I would like you to act on it again to be able to put it back in. It's going to be on the docket for March and April to have that conversation, whether it should or should not be in, but it's supposed to be in right now. So that's the nature of why we're here in January talking about it. So that's up to you. It's both documents, the exact same phrase.
And move to approve the changes made to the certified and support staff compensation and benefits explanations.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the update is approved and, to the certified and staff compensation and benefit guide and the next action item is the school calendar for 2122.
Okay, a couple of highlights on the school calendar and we'll walk through this chronologically. The dates of in-service for certified and support staff are the 24th, 25th, and 26th of August. We have earmarked the 30th and 31st as potential days for things such as open houses. We are obligated by state statute to not start school until September 1st, though you can have things like orientations and open houses and count those as summer school minutes and not have to do those things at a different time where they wouldn't be of benefit to you in that way. September 1st is your start of the school year, happens to be on a Wednesday. There are two dates that you see listed below for our startup of school with our youngest kids. Labor Day is there on the 6th. We have an in-service day on the 27th. Then we get into the month of October where we have conferences and in-service, same similar timeline as we've always had, approximately midway through the first quarter and timely enough in the first trimester. Then we have the end of the term on the 5th with an in-service day to follow on the 8th, Thanksgiving week there in November. The end of the trimester on the 1st, then Christmas break, sort of penciled in or put in in pen for us based on the way the calendar works. January 24th is the end of the semester, sort of the same timeline as where we're on right now. Many folks have asked, why didn't we have off today as opposed to the next Monday? It simply doesn't line up for a number of days in the semester. If you did that, you'd have five less days in one semester and five more days in the second semester and that instructionally, one group's getting a lot less material and one group's getting a lot more and that's not very equitable and we don't get to choose where Martin Luther King Day is, it just, it is where it is. So that's January. February, we're looking at the week of the 7th for parent-teacher conferences and in-service. A pretty sizable change this year, in the month of March, we have the end of the second trimester on March 4th. We are putting on a spring break for a second consecutive year. Usually it's been every other and the reason we're doing that, it's... And the reason we're doing that, it's pretty clear to us that many folks that had plans to travel for spring break this year are simply not able to do that for health and safety reasons. So we put it on for next year. What we have heard anecdotally about that are big thank yous, because we would really like to travel. We just don't feel comfortable doing that this year. So we have it back on there for next year. End of the, uh, term on April first. April fifteenth is not an arbitrary day off, that's Good Friday. By contract, we have to have that off. Easter is that following Sunday. In-service, we can treat it as a snow day if we want to, but based on what has transpired with COVID, we really shouldn't need to do snow days anymore than we make up in June. Um, but we could do that if we wanted. The, uh, thirteenth, uh, is another day for our youngest kids for orientation in essence. Memorial Day on the thirtieth and the last day of school, the third, with summer school a week after that on the thirteenth and graduation back into May on the twenty-second. So that's the calendar for you to approve if you so choose. And once it's approved, we'll get it on the website so folks can make plans. We always have it out there a year in advance so folks can plan their lives, I guess, around the school calendar. So I'll turn it over to you for questions.
My only thing is I don't like that the first day of Christmas break is Christmas Eve. And I'm, I've looked at the calendar and thought, you know, how could we change that? And I don't, I mean, the days that we have off are kind of, you know, planned with either conferences or holidays. But that would be my, my, I guess, wish is that we would have the twenty-third off also and not only, not start Christmas vacation on Christmas Eve. I don't know, like I said, I don't know what, what the remedy would be.
Are you asking because of like family plans or?
Yeah, and just travel. I think people like to travel to see family and if your first day off is Christmas Eve and.
But you can always just not come.
You certainly can. What are you saying, Shar?
She just said it.
Murph the Glenna kid's not coming.
We have those, I mean, right?
Yeah, well, sure.
We have them.
You can reduce the number by one. What we've built into the calendar is two days of flex, but then that gives you one day of flexibility weather-wise. Or you can put it on the sixth of June, Monday the sixth, which is not going to be a crowd pleaser.
No, no.
You can't start before September first, you can't steal from, from, uh, Thanksgiving. It really becomes that, or you choose to reduce one day of in-service. I mean, we need those in-service days, conferences, we need conferences. I mean, it gets, it gets difficult.
Yeah, and I don't know how much of it impacts our staff, but I mean, they have personal days too, or sick days or whatever they want to use, so.
I appreciate your point here and it, it really just becomes the zero-sum game of where you pick up another day.
Yeah. I hear you, but.
This was the joint product. Aaron sat on that committee, Chelsea, Jeff Smith, who's here with us, sat on that committee. Jess has run this past the folks that she represents. And we've had a lot of voices and a lot of times, good ideas have been offered and we've implemented them. Administrative team has looked at it, district team has looked at it multiple times. So it's gone through the wringer a bunch of times.
Yeah, and then it's the same issue that with the federal holidays, such as Martin Luther King Day, like today and President's Day where, you know, a lot of people have those days off, but you still have to go to school. And like you said earlier, just sometimes it doesn't make sense with the trimester and teacher in-service. So gotta, do what you gotta do.
So this is an action item, you'll need to take action if you so choose.
I'll move to accept the school calendar as printed.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the school calendar for twenty-one, twenty-two calendar year is approved. And the last action item, uh, is personnel.
Okay, we have new employee and athletic contracts for Destiny de Cosmo in clubhouse, Noah McCoy as a bus driver, Kylie Olson clubhouse, Heidi Pearson clubhouse, Tracy Pratt custodian, and Jessica Whitkop as a library media para in the elementary. We have retirements for Lisa Hill, Montessori teacher at Lean, and I'll talk more about her in a moment, and resignations for Lori Swontak, um, at custo, uh, middle school custodian. And you'll need to take action on those.
Move to approve the personnel action.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, personnel action is approved. And that is it for the, um, agenda items and.
I have a little recognition on Lisa Hill retirement and Cheryl, you can certainly chime in with tears or good words, one or the other. Lisa Hill is tendering her, or she has tendered her letter of retirement. She's been here in Amory for twenty-three years. She taught prior in Texas and in Minnesota. She said, I think I have about twenty-eight. That means you've been in it a while, if you don't know the exact number, twenty-eight. Her favorite memories would be all the interesting things that students have said to her over the years. I'm full well aware that for K and K, having had three of them in my house, they say some really interesting things. Uh, great stories and answers to questions that I've never even thought about. I also treasure the memories I have made with wonderful coworkers and have been blessed with over the years. Amory has great staff and great students. I'm looking forward to, and this, these are her words, selling her home, most of her belongings and her husband, her and her husband are going to take their camper and travel the country doing work camping jobs and our first staff's going to be spending with time with their granddaughters near San Antonio, Texas. So it sounds like families on the docket. And Cheryl, I'm not sure if you wanted to say anything? If you'd like, go ahead. The youngest in my house was in her classroom as recently as last year. And he said, I like Mrs. Hill so much, I am going to say hi to her every day for the rest of my life. And then the first day of school this year, you walk right past her and didn't say hi. You forgot already?
Yeah. Oh, how soon they forget.
Yes, he was on to the next one.
Thanks for the years of service, Mrs. Hill. She is fabulous.
All right, um, I guess, uh, I'll take a motion to go into closed session to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five one Z.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, uh, roll call, Aaron.
Yes.
Shar.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.